All right. Hey, there we go. Welcome, everybody, to our Public Safety Committee meeting. Can we get a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? None? All right, motion carries. In the packet, we have a few written reports. I'll just read through so folks know what's there. Sit and Lie Monthly Update, Police Ombudsman Monthly Report, the Integris Architecture Progress Report, Police and Fire Uniform Overtime Report, Photored Monthly Update, and Strategic Initiatives Monthly Update. And we are going to start off with scraps advisory board appointment interviews. And so for those that don't know, there has been some movement in trying to reestablish the scraps advisory board as it exists right now in the current ILA. Some other jurisdictions have appointed some officials from their jurisdictions, and so we are looking at potentially doing the same. And I understand we have two appointees, potential appointees, that we will be hearing from? Is that correct? Or no? I don't know. Yeah. All right. Luis, you want to come on down? And Garrett?
Move appointment. Can I get a second on that? All in favor, aye. You guys are good.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I appreciate the opportunity. Excited anytime to get a chance to serve even at a different capacity that kind of dovetails into the regulatory arm that we already do in code enforcement. It's kind of exciting.
Nice.
Question?
Please.
So here's my question. How do you separate doing the job and the code enforcement piece with animal enforcement and that compassion for animals?
Yeah, absolutely. I think code enforcement, that's kind of paramount to the way we approach all of our cases. It's not necessarily the people that are creating violation or the entity, it's the violation in itself. So I think that we just inherently separate the two in every case type, whether it be garbage litter debris or, you know, the keeping of animals. It's always something that we have to consider when we get a case.
I would just ask if you could briefly just express your kind of thoughts on the ongoing conversation that we've been having regarding scraps and the concerns of this council?
Sure. No, I think that it's a great, it's something that obviously being on the periphery and not kind of party to the direct conversations, that you try to put yourself in both entities' perspective. You know, we are one to handle policy and making tough decisions. However, like we just mentioned, we have to be compassionate and really take the full picture involved in all of our decision-making. So I can totally see merits in both arguments, and it's something that we look forward to getting more information about.
Please.
So this question's for both of you, because Garrett, you're just standing back there. So the board has been inactive for some time, and I'm wondering, given that it has, so you'd be restarting this board, how, do you have some sort of strategy to get it going quickly and make sure that it's functioning the way it should?
Yeah, I would say that I do have experience in that, in that perspective. When you deal with entities, whether it be decision-making entities or professional associations that have been defunct for some time, it really is getting the players involved, you know, at the table right away and kind of establishing some sort of goal that we're all going to be working towards. So I think that's the biggest thing, is to really understand our why and get everybody kind of moving in the same direction.
I have another really tough question for you. Do either of you have pets? And if so, what pets do you have?
I was excited to answer this one when I was thinking about what types of questions can come up. So I do, I have two, two dogs. I am a dog lover. Allergic to cats, even though my daughter keeps trying to coerce me into one. They kind of intimidate me, so I'm not a cat guy. But I am a dog person, so I have two dogs, a brother and a sister. They're quite old now. Their mother was a purebred Shih Tzu, and their dad was half Maltese, half Bichon. So little white, little fluffy things. You ever seen Never Ending Story? Yeah, that's my dog that flies around. That's the way they look.
Falcor, for the record.
Falcor!
Nice. Go ahead.
I want to hear, Garrett, do you have pets?
Oh.
I do. Well, I would just say again, this has been a year of opportunity. So, don't laugh, Chris. But again, I think, and I've had a number of different conversations, I think there's a lot of opportunity, just going to speak on a number of different topics. One is the potential, the conflict. I think there's an opportunity to take that conflict, turn that into passion, and then that turns into positive results for all. And I think we both come from departments and backgrounds that are very community-facing. We have to engage with the community, we have to listen to the community, we have to respond to the community, and that helps drive the decisions that we make on a daily basis. I think there's a great opportunity, when you say, you know, how do we separate the emotion versus practice, is coming in and establishing those policies and procedures in the different scenarios that everyone understands if X happens, then here is the process and procedures that we go through to be able to combat that. And then how does that get communicated to the staff and partners? How does that get communicated to the public? And I think that would be one of the first pieces when you're really looking at a board coming back together, is one, establishing what those roles and responsibilities are going to be, what, how are those decisions going to be made? And then establishing those policies and procedures that doesn't take the passion out of it, but then takes some of that emotion out of it, so there is a process in place. I do have two dogs, don't have a cat. Just found out, so we did, we're kind of weird, we did the genetic testing on both our dogs to see what the heck they are. Just found out, so last Friday, our puppy, the one-year-old, half German Shepherd, half standard poodle.
Wow.
Crazy-looking thing. Kind of looks like a Irish wolfhound-ish thing, yeah. And then our other, we haven't got back yet, but she's an 11-year-old lab pit bull mix, we think is what she is. So two little, the two little sweethearts, part of our family. So again, I think it's a part of what we both can do, is try to build those, build those relationships, take that passion, put that into something positive to make change, and doing that change through policies and procedures at a regional level.
Okay. Anything else?
I just had a quick question. Both of you will be amazing serving on this committee. My concern is starting something new, the time commitment and the capacity of already your existing duties at the end of the year, and that type of commitment going forward. So I just struggle with you all being able, not that you won't, but that you'll sacrifice yourself to do the 110% thing, and how you'll be able to really balance that time, because we know starting up a new entity is very time-intensive out the gate. And we are, I feel like we're in a time constraint here with all the other parameters around scraps going forward currently. So that's just a concern, it's not a question, but...
And there are some moving pieces, and I think too, I mean, if there is a conversation or thought process too, I mean, this is something that the council could always look at, at the beginning of the new fiscal year as well, of, you know, whether, you know, our evaluation comes back positive or not, but also to, of any other interest within the organization that we would see as a better replacement or as another perspective. Again, I think both, I'm not speaking for Luis here, but I will, I think we're both, we're very open and willing to work with both sides to make the biggest impact.
What high school did you guys go to?
I think I know. I don't.
Cleland Roslin High.
Oh, boy.
And what's the dogs, what are your dogs' names?
Maggie and Millie.
Maggie and Millie, okay. What are your dogs' names?
Fifi and Dexter, so Fiona and Dexter.
In high school?
Oh, my high school was Benson Union High School in Benson, Arizona. Go Bobcats.
Anything else for anybody?
I would, I would just say that as we look for this year, finishing this year, but the start of a new year, and we've talked about this, I would hope that this committee, advisory committee would have somebody from the public.
Yes.
On it, maybe two people from, you know, that are animal owners and have, that live in the city of Spokane, and could be representative too.
Yeah. And just a reminder for folks, this Thursday at our study session, we will be having additional conversation on this related to the dispute resolution process that the county has requested be started. And so my understanding is the county CEO will, will be here addressing us on Thursday to answer some questions and talk about next steps. I also just want to point out, there was another pretty horrendous, in my opinion, euthanasia decision that came out this weekend that...
There were two.
Yeah, two, yeah. But one in particular that has really made the rounds on social media and has really gotten the community in an uproar. And so there will be a lot of discussion on that, I believe, on Thursday with the county to better understand that. But again, that was an issue that took place outside the city. It was a cat from the valley, which goes to our issues of regional policies to make this situation better. So I appreciate you guys being willing to be change agents and go there and provide that push. And so I would just say, I've, I've not been afraid to be outspoken on this before we had the advisory, and I will continue to be outspoken even after the advisory, but I appreciate that you guys will be there helping to lead the way.
I have a question.
Please.
Is there any appetite on council for this to be a term that ends at the, in 31st of December and then can be renewed? Or do you just want to let them continue on?
I think it'd be smart to do it that way.
I think that finishing out the year makes a lot of sense.
Okay.
Yeah. Considering we don't know, you know, who's going to be leading our city next year, it might make sense to, to have it end then, and then, yeah.
Okay. Not that we don't trust you, you're great.
Thank you both. Tom Williams. It's our fire update. You've got 10 minutes if you need it.
Nice to see you all. I'm not running for any board, but I have a nine-month-old rottweiler and two barn cats.
Nice.
What are their names?
The rottweilers, Maya, and the barn cats are Clark and Eddie. I'm kind of a Christmas Vacation fan, so.
Okay.
Yes.
Works out pretty good. I'll be relatively short. As you know, we have a recruit academy in progress right now. Unfortunately, over the last few weeks, we've lost four folks out of that for a few reasons, but we still have 21 in there with a graduation date of December, which should bring us to about our 311, 311 operational folks, roughly about eight relief folks a day. So it really will continue to help us tackle our overtime issue, which is my next subject. I know we talked last week when we all got together, but found out today we're 30% lower this month in overtime than we were compared to last year. So our efforts are starting to pay off and work there. I'd like to recognize our fire prevention division. Chief Lance Dahl is doing fantastic. I know that there's been some things in the media and all the work, all the unhappiness, some of those things that are going on, but it's necessary work, and it's good work for the, for the community and those that live and visit us. So I appreciate what they're doing. Just a reminder, there's Smoke Detector Blitz in the Nevada Heights is this weekend, so we're going to get out and knock on doors and try to make some homes safer. And if you recall, we, part of the prevention division was home to some of our accommodated folks that chose not to get the COVID vaccination, and we're actually in, in the process now of moving, moving them back out onto the line. They have met their obligations, and actually, a couple of them are looking to maybe even stay in the division. So that says a lot about how much they're enjoying what they're doing and moving forward there. And then finally, we tried something new this year with a Type 1 engine, Engine 5 up at Eagle Ridge. You've seen the fencing and some of those things, and as the weather's starting to churn, we're probably, you know, three to four weeks away from that going back to Attack 5, so it can be housed and protected from the elements. I will say, it was very successful in our, our eyes, and we'll have some, we'll have some data for you as we move forward.
Right.
Other than that, any questions? Yeah?
Go ahead.
So you have a graduating class in December, then when will your next class be starting?
So the next class, we pushed back, we were going to do one in January. If you recall, in January, our debit days will go away, and the department goes to 40, to our work week. And so we moved it back to probably May-ish or June, so that we can get a good assessment of what's happening in the first six months and have a better idea of a class size.
Okay. And information or any indicators on retirements to make sure we're fully staffed?
No, again, it's fascinating here, but we tend to usually get, I'm walking in a door and I'm leaving tomorrow. So we, we don't get a lot of notice in our organization of when folks are, are leaving.
Go ahead.
So the fire engine's going to be housed for the winter. Is there any consideration of using the house that you're using currently to add a barn-like structure to house a fire engine year-round?
There has been, and before my time, that was looked at. I, I don't know exactly, I'm trying to remember, it was around a half a million dollar investment into basically putting a, a large garage onto a house. It's not an ideal fire station, it works, and I think there'd be some conversations necessary with the neighborhood association on if they would even allow that, since we're in, we're in that neighborhood. But that discussion has taken place. We actually just last year even looked at making some drawings and trying to raise the garage and lower the floor a little bit to get an engine in there, but so far, it's not economically there.
Well, it's cheaper than a $7 million fire station.
This is true.
So I'm just planting that seed, because the fire season is getting longer and longer every year, so you're going to be moving it, but that doesn't mean that the fire season is going to abate.
No, agreed, but I want to remind you, there still is a very capable piece of apparatus that will be there. It's not as great for our structural firefighting, but it is still capable of, of keeping, keeping a fire at bay until the rest of our apparatus can, can arrive.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Nothing else? All right, I'm actually going to jump a little bit, and Christine, are you ready? Can we go ahead and do the discussion on the SPO? That way you can get back to your important business.
I'm just coming in asking, I guess, for approval to be on the agenda...
Christine, could you use the microphone? Sorry.
To be on the agenda next week, to add a personnel to our department. We do have it in the 2024 budget, but I'd like to get someone on board now. We don't have the position in. We do have the money from the vacant director position, and so I just am hoping to get them in before year-end, to get them up to speed before everything starts with us.
Any questions, right? So I guess my, the two thoughts that immediately come to my mind are, one, you know, we have a freeze on hiring right now. And so just wondering, kind of, does this reach a certain level that, that we should override that? And then second is, you know, we've really tried to make a lot of these decisions, I think, more holistically. And so when you're, you've got salary savings captured, obviously, we have a $20 million deficit. Is this the place where it's most important to go, or are there other places? And I don't think we've had that, well, we certainly have not had that conversation holistically at any point yet. We certainly haven't had it related to this, and this is obviously just one smaller item.
Right.
But those are the two thoughts that come to my mind. I'm just wondering if other council members have any other...
It's not a general fund position.
Yeah, it's not a general fund position.
Oh, it's not a general fund position?
Correct.
Okay. And so where does it draw from then?
From the city's retirement.
Oh, okay, 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 very different.
And so we're just down to two people, so we've lost our director currently. I'm interim, and then we took on some work when Chris Redmond was promoted, some of the left one, medical benefit work.
Gotcha.
And so...
Okay, go ahead.
Years ago, there were five people in that.
Correct.
Yeah, and we're down to two currently.
Correct.
Right. And so this, this position, can you sort of explain the, the duties that this position is going to help you handle, because you're down to two?
Correct. So we're looking at a clerk three position, so to just help us with the day-to-day administration and answering the phones to enable Donald, my coworker and I, to handle the more complex items that come up, and so it'd be more clerical.
Okay. Well, that's helpful. I wouldn't want to sweep the funds from SERs to balance our budget anyway, so this makes a lot more sense to me. So thank you for clarifying.
And I just, Christine had talked to me about this, it's really about the customer experience, because many are seniors and they require more hand-holding. It's complex, and we've had some cases where if we had been able to be engaged more, we could have had solutions quicker than what was before. So I think it's, they deserve it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And the position has been there, so certainly supportive.
Great. Anything else on this one? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And then I also am just going to bump to human resources discussion, if we could, get those two taken care of, and then the rest will be pretty much all public safety-focused.
Good afternoon, this afternoon, everyone. So I submitted this to you guys early this afternoon. It's a PowerPoint presentation of what the 2024 goals objective is for HR and what that looks like going forward. So I'm going to, I not only have 10 minutes, but it kind of highlights the strategic vision of HR and what we're going to work on, things we're going to look at holistically throughout the city. So I'm going to jump to a couple of slides, you guys can read through this at your leisure. So one of the things that I look at is a SWOT analysis, right? So a SWOT analysis gives me the strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities of the current state of the city from an employee perspective. That analysis allows me to drill down in targets and focus that HR needs to focus on in order to bring the city from an employee perspective current with respect to where we are today. So one of the things in the missions of HR is to understand the vision and define why HR exists. I've been here seven months, and it's kind of been a tough road to go down, to understand, you know, what HR's past focus has been, what HR needs to focus on. One of the things that has come out of it is policies, right? So a lot of policies within the city are, date back to 1994, that haven't been updated, that haven't been bought for, um, bought, excuse me, bought current with respect to where we are today. As an example of policy, I did an analysis on a benefits policy, and usually organizations go through benefits to make sure that who's on those plans are relevant to being on those plans, because it becomes a cost savings perspect, from a cost savings perspective. And that type of audit hasn't been done in the city for over 10 years. So those are some of the challenges and obstacles that we're facing in order to make sure that we're doing our due diligence from an HR perspective in order to drive and affect change. So one of the other major concerns in the city is staffing, is staffing retention and what that looks like. So from what we found from upskilling perspective, right person, right job, right person, right career, there's a lot of opportunity there. From a classification perspective, working with civil service, there's a lot of opportunity there. From a resource perspective, budget, there's a lot of opportunity there. I mean, overall, from a performance management perspective, making, you know, there's a lot of opportunities. They have a lot of managers and supervisors who are in these roles, but don't necessarily have the skill sets, and that's no discredit to them, because as employers, we own that, right? Prior to putting someone in a role. I'm finding that a lot of them don't have the necessary skill sets and ability to manage or supervise, and that's coming directly from their subordinates of the individuals that I've talked to with respect to that. Again, you guys have this, as always, I'm available for conversation around it. But I wanted to focus on this topic, which is a hot topic in the city, right? Based on what has happened in the past, right? So training, training is vital and key in order to ensure that individuals within the city that work for the city know how to function in their daily routines and in the workplace. I've found that those training perspectives have been lackluster for whatever reason. I've challenged my staff to come up with training with respect to harassment, and I've attached a policy, I sent that policy that's pending to you guys also, that's going through legal, and I'm going to roll that out as soon as legal clears and as soon as I have the conversations with the unions to make sure that it's okay with respect to that. But workplace bullying training is key and vital. As I've made my way around the city, unfortunately, I've seen a lot of that type of behavior going on. Diversity inclusion, if I look at specific departments, there's not a lot of diversity and inclusion from, from a demographics perspective, right? And I've challenged my staff to look at our hiring processes, our hiring protocols, and work with civil services as well, to make sure that we're being inclusive from a demographics perspective, being inclusive from a skill set perspective, and being inclusive from a behavior perspective. Unconscious buying, right? Living, unconscious, is key in this day, in this mindset, in this culture, that individuals understand and know what that is. Ethics, right? How do we perform and conduct ourselves in the workplace? That's vital and that's key. And those things and those traits and behavior, unfortunately, from a cultural perspective, are not systemic throughout the city. So this is just kind of a high-level perspective, and again, I sent this to you guys. Please feel free to tear it apart, read through it. If you have questions, comments, concerns, get back to me. I would love to partner, partner with you guys from that perspective to make sure that we're all on the same page with respect to the direction that the city is going in.
So on this SWOT training you talked about, so would you do that, or would that be like somebody contracted out to come in and do that?
That's a good question, because it comes down to dollars and cents from a budgetary perspective. We could do it, we meaning the HR team, but from a bandwidth perspective, we're very small to bring it forward.
And then my other question was for next year, I know every department is short employees. Are you going to have an ask for more positions for next year?
Yes.
Okay.
Approximately five to six.
Okay.
So, thank you for that. My concern is a little bit around recruitment, and I've mentioned this before, the city, from my observation, has an old recruiting-style model that really does not go out into the communities, all of the communities that the city is hiring. You see an STA bus, we're hiring. I don't see anything like that from the city, so is that going to be a priority since we have these vacant positions?
That's a high priority, right? When I looked at the recruiting dynamic, it's, it's been systemic to a small geographical area, right? The culture that I come... have the skill sets, and that's no discredit to them because as employers, we own that, right? Prior to putting someone in a role. I'm finding that a lot of them don't have the necessary skill sets and ability to manage or supervise, and that's coming directly from their subordinates of the individuals that I've talked to with respect to that. Again, you guys have this, as always. I'm available for conversation around it. But I wanted to focus on this topic, which is a hot topic in the city, right? Based on what has happened in the past, right? So training, training is vital and key in order to ensure that individuals within the city that work for the city know how to function in their daily routines and in the workplace. I've found that those training perspectives have been lackluster for whatever reason. I've challenged my staff to come up with training with respect to harassment, and I've attached a policy. I sent that policy that's pending to you guys also that's going through legal, and I'm going to roll that out as soon as legal clears and as soon as I have the conversations with the unions to make sure that it's okay with respect to that. But workplace bullying training is key and vital. As I've made my way around the city, unfortunately, I've seen a lot of that type of behavior going on. Diversity and inclusion, if I look at specific departments, there's not a lot of diversity and inclusion from, from a demographics perspective, right? And I've challenged my staff to look at our hiring processes, our hiring protocols, and work with civil service as well to make sure that we're being inclusive from a demographics perspective, being inclusive from a skill set perspective, and being inclusive from behavior perspective. Unconscious buying, right? Living is key in this day, in this mindset, in this culture, that individuals understand and know what that is. Ethics, right? How do we perform and conduct ourselves in the workplace? That's vital and that's key. And those things and those traits and behavior, unfortunately, from a cultural perspective, are not systemic throughout the city. So this is just kind of a high-level perspective. And again, I sent this to you guys. Please feel free to tear it apart, read through it. If you have questions, comments, concerns, get back to me. I would love to partner, partner with you guys from that perspective to make sure that we're all on the same page with respect to the direction that the city is going in.
So on this SWOT training you talked about, so would you do that? Or would that be like somebody contracted out to come in and do that?
That's a good question because it comes down to dollars and cents from a budgetary perspective. We could do it, we meaning the HR team, but from a bandwidth perspective, we're very small.
To bring it out.
To bring it forward.
And then my other question was for next year. I know every department is short employees. Are you going to have an ask for more positions for next year?
Yes.
Okay.
Approximately five to six.
Okay.
So thank you for that. My concern is a little bit around recruitment, and I've mentioned this before. The city, from my observation, has an old recruiting-style model that really does not go out into the communities, all of the communities that the city is hiring. You see an STA bus, we're hiring. I don't see anything like that from the city. So is that going to be a priority since we have these vacant positions?
That's a high priority, right? When I looked at the recruiting dynamic, it's, it's been systemic to a small geographical area, right? The culture that I come re-recruited nationally. I'm also looking at the policy that allows us to go out and recruit and, you know, relocate somebody to the city or spoken, right? Because currently, that bucket of employees is very small, and you have to cast a wider net in order to obtain top, I don't want quality talent, I want top talent that sets this city up five, 10, 15 years from now. And I agree with you, that, that just haven't happened. The talent's been homegrown, that's what I like to say, if you will, but it has to be a wider net cast.
I like all that I've heard. My question is, do you have some sort of timeline? So you asked us to weigh in on some of this stuff. Do you have just a vague timeline, not hard and fast, but just a vague timeline in your head as to what you'd like to see when and then when the policies would be implemented?
From a training perspective, I want that done expeditiously because I have to, you know, if you don't know, you don't know, right? So you can't be held accountable to anything because you don't know. But once you do know, then the accountabilities come into play. So from a training perspective, hopefully by the first quarter of 2024, I want to start to institute that at the beginning of the year because, like I said, I have an employee population that is operating status quo, if you will. But I need to put some guardrails in place to adapt to some of the behaviors that I'm seeing throughout the city.
Thank you.
Question, David. In regards to staff retention, I know when staff leave, they do an exit survey. What are exit surveys telling us?
A lot of them are refusing to do exit surveys. And I think a lot of that is driven by that because if they do an exit survey, they can leave and then come back and reapply for something or test for something else, and they want the ability to come back. So a lot of times when we put out exit surveys, a lot of individuals are refusing to do it.
One question I would have for you. So you're talking about civil service and some of that. Have you worked out what those changes might be? Because obviously, civil service has charter protections, and it also has, you know, a lot of different codes that relate to it. And this has been an ongoing, I think, issue in different ways of how do we, you know, targeted hire? How do we hire the folks we most want? And what does that, those process change looks like?
So I could use my own area to answer that. I have two jobs open right now, and Kelsey and I are sitting down right now and going over the job descriptions to make sure they are viable to what I need done in HR. So that's what that looks like. We're going to sit down and go through jobs and go through positions to make sure that those job descriptions are viable to what we need in the city today.
And how does that increase diversity?
I'm sorry?
How does that increase diversity of hiring?
Your recruiting practices, right? From a diversity perspective, it's, it's the ability to do the job. You want the right person, the ability to do the job. But some of, some of what I'm seeing is that systemic to a particular characteristics as opposed to the ability to do the job. And those are things from a diversity perspective that has to change.
No, I fully agree. But if you have a list of 20 folks and you have to hire from that list, starting at the top, how do you ensure diversity?
Through the interviewing process to make sure that they're interviewed correctly, to make sure that interviewing is fair and equitable across the board and not necessarily, I don't want to say favoritism, but this person's on a list. And like in my area alone, we're using the performance window to make sure that a person's evaluated closely within that first 60 days, and correct me if I'm wrong, right? 60 days? 60 days to make sure they're meeting the performance criteria that we require in HR. If they're not, they're going to be disqualified. So that's how you can put diversity parameters in place. It's not just, you're just coming over and saying, okay, we're going to let you sit here and be status quo. No, we're going to evaluate you. We're going to make sure we, the best person is doing the job. If not, we're going to disqualify you from those jobs. So I think that'll help a lot of what you're referring to as opposed to people coming over and sitting in positions and just kind of.
Interesting. I'd be, I'd be very curious just to see how that works and if that actually complies with our code. I'm not totally sure, but if we could chat more offline about it.
And just a heads up, I've talked to, or to civil service, we catch up once in a while. I'm really impressed at how both departments are really working together like they're supposed to. Because if you work together and you sit down and talk about it, you can make it work, right? And it benefits both departments. So thank you for that. I appreciate that.
I was just going to say, David, anecdotally, I've heard that about 50% of our employees that work for the city could retire tomorrow. We're somewhere in that.
We're in that, around that percentage, yes. And unfortunately, there's been, from a succession plan perspective, there's nothing, and that's something that we're looking at also, that's on the list. There's nothing in place. And succession goes back to training, and I like to say making someone ready now, ready in six months, ready in 90 days, ready in a year, right? And that goes back to the whole performance process, right? Right now, currently, there's a PAR system, right? But we have to look at that to make sure that we're equipping individuals with the tools to be successful and to put them in a ready-now state.
I have a question. Maybe this is a question for Lyndon. I'm not entirely sure. For us to place a focus on diversity as opposed to performance, is that something that we can do? Yeah?
But it, it ties in together, right? Because you can't say, I'm African-American guy, well, we don't, we're short on African-Americans, so we're going to hire that guy. I still have to be able to do the job. I still have to be able to perform successfully. So those are kind of some of the characteristics that have to be looked at as well.
Anything else?
One more question. Back to exit surveys. I just think these are so important.
I agree.
If folks don't want to work here, what are there policies we can change? I think about a company I worked for that required in order for me to successfully leave and still get what was entitled to me, I had to complete that survey. What can we do to assure those are completed?
We can put parameters in like that, but it still comes down to legalities and what the state laws require. Like in Virginia, yeah, you can do that, right? You can require and mandate that. But certain parameters in certain states don't have those requirements. I mean, we can, you can put parameters in place where throughout the performance evaluation process, there's a six-month evaluation that you're getting source and feedback. I was talking to my staff, one of my staff members this morning, is I'm going to put out SERV, I'm going to start utilizing Survey Monkey to put out surveys to employee population just to get the voice of the employee population, see where we need to improve or where we can improve. And that'll help a great deal because then we'll know.
Yeah, I had a question about surveys also, but not on the exit, but on the current staff. Do we do surveys, like employee engagement surveys?
That's coming. And that, that's on the deck that I sent you guys because that, that's key. And it gives me, from an HR perspective, the pulse of the city and what that looks like. So that's actually in the deck that I sent you guys as well.
And so you're planning on rolling that out?
Mm-hmm. Beginning of the year.
And is that something that then council could get a report on afterwards?
Yes. So if you look at the end of the deck that I've sent you, there's four similar, there's four questions. That will give you insight into what those questions will look like. I'm going to use probably like 20 questions to start it off, but yes, at the beginning of the year because I need to know from an HR perspective what we're facing and what we need to focus on.
And then my follow-up question is, because what prompted this presentation was about the former city administrator. And so I was just wondering if you could speak explicitly some lessons learned from that?
Well, change and to be about change and to bring about change from harassment, bring about change from bullying, bring about change from, from diversity in the workplace, just to bring about change holistically in order to move the city forward, right? And also to have everyone engaged in that process and that change.
Just one more comment. We all know that as far as recruiting, that if we want this to be successful, we need to, to meet people we're there at. And so anytime anybody from HR needs to come with a council member to a neighborhood council meeting to just be in that neighborhood to talk to folks, I know there are opportunities to have office space at the libraries in those neighborhoods, but anything that we can do to help, please let us know. Because I know in my district, we talk about these things a lot at council meetings, just in visiting and talking about, you know, somebody's looking for work and that kind of thing. So it's so important to be out there. So if there's anything we can do to help.
Invite us, we'll come.
Yeah.
I've, I've been with police on a ride-along. I'm going with, out with fire. I've been to some of the fires. So just invite us, and it'll probably be me because these guys have a lot in place.
Yeah, I think just a brief overview of what, who you are and what you're doing.
Absolutely.
The changes you're making and how we're really looking to get out there in the community and get a more diverse workforce.
Absolutely.
I think it's important. Okay.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I want your feedback on the deck and the policy.
Jackie, you're on deck.
Thanks.
And just my, my two cents on the exit surveys is incentivize rather than hold back their check or something like that.
Free pizza.
Yeah, something, something worthwhile.
Good afternoon, council. Thank you for having us here today. This presentation is actually meant to just basically educate the council on our volunteer services unit. It's one of our units that does a ton of work, but they're kind of behind the scenes. And a lot of people, even in our department, we need to do some education about volunteer services and what the unit does for the department. So included in your packet today was a report from October that's, it's just based on volunteer services and what they do. Volunteer services has been around since about 1987. They've done a lot of work between then and now. If you look at 2022 alone, they saved the city about $778,000 of just man-hours and working. We currently have approximately 74 volunteers, and in 2022, they donated over 26,000 hours. That is a lot of work. Our volunteers range from citizen volunteers, explorers, cadets, and reserve officers. They bring a lot of diversity to the department. They're basically recruiting because we're recruiting young, and there's a group of these folks that go from explorer to cadet to citizen volunteer, and then sometimes full-time employee, commissioned or non-commissioned. This unit has been run for many years, well, since 2017 by Captain Richards. So that's, I asked him to be here today. He has also been involved with the Explorer program since it started in 1987, and the unit is currently run by Sergeant Trevor Winter. So I asked Sergeant Winters to come and provide some, maybe more specifics about the different areas of volunteer services, and then Captain Richards might pipe in with his historical knowledge. One of the newer things we're also working on is Skill Bridge, which is a program that we do with the Department of Defense to basically bring in folks from the military, and they are being, still being paid by the military for a six-month period, but yet they can work with us in the city. And that's a program that the military does to try to re-home and integrate their employees back into civilian life. Sergeant Winters?
I don't know how much I have to add here. Thank you. Thanks for having me today. So bear with me, I've been in this position for about six weeks now, so I'm still learning just like everyone else. But yeah, like Director McConnell said, we, we have really four facets within volunteer services. Our explorers, our, our younger kids, they're 14 to 18 years old, so generally, high school-age students. They have two meetings a month where they get to learn different aspects of law enforcement. But there's a lot of leadership and character building kind of things that go into that. Gets them familiar with what law enforcement is, what we do as a profession. They can then get the opportunities to go out on ride-alongs with officers, kind of see real-world aspects of that. They also help out with a lot of our large city events, so Blooms Day, Hoop Fest, those kind of things. The explorers are out there as well, just adding another presence on the street. After that, we have our cadet program. It used to be called a co-op program. And co-op traditionally was 18 to 25, but you had to be in college, and it was attached to a college program. A lot of the area schools no longer have the criminal justice programs that feed into that. So we, we no longer have the college enrollment as a requirement, but it's still for kind of those college-age students. And they kind of build on that explorers, they still have their, their bimonthly trainings. But then they have the ability to do what's called cadet patrols. So they actually get a couple of cadets in a patrol car. It's marked differently than a normal, normal patrol car. They're not in a normal police uniform, but they get to go out and handle some minor lower-level calls. So they do have a benefit to patrol by helping take some of those calls, like the, the collision. So instead of somebody waiting for an hour or so for an officer to, to free up to get there, they can maybe get there a little sooner, help you out with that exchange of information on a collision. And again, it's just more of that building that community where they're getting to see kind of what law enforcement is and how we, how we build from there. The other, the next kind of evolution in that, I guess, would be a reserve officer. So reserve officers go through like a 370-hour, I believe it is, academy. It's evenings and one day of the weekend, so it generally starts in June, finishes in November. I think they go from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and then all day on Saturday. When they complete that academy, when they are acting in a reserve role within the department, they're wearing the same exact uniform as every other officer that's out there. They have the same police rights and authorities when they're out there. And they, they can come out, they can actually work, after attaining a certain level of training, they can come out and work on a patrol shift on their own. So again, it's a benefit to patrol. It just helps kind of give our numbers to help even respond for calls for service and that kind of thing. And then we have our, our citizen volunteers. They used to be called senior volunteers, but we don't want to dissuade anybody from volunteering because we'll take anybody 18 and over, and, and there's a lot of aspects within the city. We do our, you know, mail runs between different departments, picking up property, putting it on property, working the front desk. And then there's another aspect that we're, we're starting to kind of institute, we're unsure on the name, but like a volunteer response team. So much like county CERT team, if we have a major incident within the city, we need streets blocked off, those kind of things. We have a group of volunteers that are willing to, even in the middle of the night, come out and assist patrol with keeping a scene safe or at least the public out of that area while patrol is doing what they need to do.
I have a question.
Any questions?
Talk a little bit about, and I know you've only been doing this for six weeks, so you don't have to.
Do my best.
You don't have to know everything. But what are the connections or the partnerships with our COPS program?
I don't want to overspeak, but COPS, as far as community-oriented policing, that service is separate. So we do not, we, we don't really have any major interaction there. As far as I know, at least.
Okay. Maybe that's something we can, I mean, it just seems to me you've got a COPS program out there doing a lot of that too with volunteers. They're obviously not going through some of the stuff you're.
Yeah, and COPS is a, I believe, a 501(c)(3). They're their own entity and organization. And there are aspects that do overlap.
Okay.
I know for some of our things, vacation home checks has been kind of a big one that's come up occasionally. I know COPS has done that at times and volunteer services has. Through COVID, we lost a lot of our citizen volunteers just by not being able to come in. I know one of the benefits of our agency taking that over is the vetting process that we actually have with these volunteers. They do have to go through a pretty extensive background. So, and, and I don't know what, what COPS does, but when you're giving out addresses of this person's on vacation for a period of time, we want to make sure that the people that are going checking on those homes are, you know, the best quality that we can.
Well, I think they have to go through background checks through COPS.
I just don't know what that is.
But the other thing that popped into my mind is they have the NOP program, which is, they call it the nosy old person program. So I don't know what it, anyway, they're the cars with the cop decals where they will drive around and check out houses that somebody has said, hey, we're going to be on vacation. They'll drive through the neighborhood, drive by the house, make sure things are okay. I'm, I'm just wondering if there's some possible partnerships there that might enhance both?
Sure, we're always open to partnerships because it helps everybody, right? Like in terms of workload. So we have a good relationship with COPS. I talked to the COPS director two weeks ago. I think he and I are going to get together just to talk about just that. You know, there will be some things that historically we're probably going to do. That doesn't mean we can't do them in cooperation with COPS.
Right.
And vice versa. And Captain Richards was, you know, telling me that they have, volunteer services has worked with COPS volunteers in terms of going out and canvassing neighborhoods and, and doing some things like that. So yes, there are opportunities.
I think when you can use it because there are neighborhoods that really love those cop shops, and they love those volunteers, and they know them, they know the officers. So sometimes that's a nice connection.
Council president and then council member Wilkerson.
Thanks. A while back, we made the suggestion of using volunteers that are trained, such as you're A while back, we made the suggestion of using volunteers that are trained, such as you're describing, to do fingerprinting, take reports, that sort of thing after a property crime to keep the actual officer, the commissioned officer, free to do other things because it's time-consuming. Is that a possibility at all?
Good afternoon. We are working, at least at the Northeast Precinct, which I'm recently assigned as the precinct captain, we're working on a process to do exactly that. There's some technical issues involving taking those reports at the precinct level and getting those into our records system. And the people, the willingness is there, it's just the technical issues in getting those reports written and into the system. But we are working on that. It's not a matter of, like I said, it's not a matter of the willingness or the people that we have them in place. It's just getting them into our LRM system, our law enforcement records management system. So that is happening. And I believe the South Precinct is already doing that, but that is occurring as we speak.
Great, thank you.
I just have a question on your young people recruitment. For those who are listening, what is that process? If I have a 14-year-old who wants to volunteer, is that just specifically through the high school? Is there any community engagement around that, partnerships?
Yeah, we actually work quite a bit with our community outreach group as well. I mean, they're involved in a lot more of these different community groups, community meetings. A lot of it is word of mouth from the high school students that are in the program, talking with their friends. But we are involved in some of those recruiting things. So I get to look at the community outreach group and what are they going out and doing? And is that something that could be a benefit to where we might be able to get some recruitment from that? So it's a very diverse range that we're able to kind of pull from. And I think that's ultimately the benefit of what we're looking for is trying to get this wide variety of people that can be interested to help kind of educate, you know, our younger youth what law enforcement is.
Right. Well, I'd be supportive of a marketing campaign around that. So I think that's something we could look at. Word of mouth is great, but it's just who you're talking to is who you're talking to. And could be a whole swath of people out there that just aren't getting the word-of-mouth information.
There are a lot of events that community outreach goes to and they kind of plug both a recruiting piece and a community outreach piece. We're incorporating a lot more volunteer services in that. They're going to an event this week that is actually for younger-aged children that aren't even ready to go to the explorers. But our view of that is that's still a pool of people that these kids, if they don't know about the program, that, oh, I could do this in a year or two years, they may never come to us. Whereas if we educate them now on, hey, if you do these things, you'd be a great candidate to come to our Explorer program. So we do look for those opportunities to go out and educate, make contacts when we're going to schools. We are providing information. We have a very robust Explorer program and I think Captain Richards kind of wants to touch on the fact that our Explorer program is known, I believe, nationwide. Yes?
Yes. Since the early 80s, the state of Washington, we have a footprint in the state. We have a state Explorer Association. And matter of fact, two of our SPD folks are board members, executive board members on that association. And we are one of the few in the nation that actually has a state association. Texas has one as well. And many of the people that we actually run into statewide come back to Spokane, they go to East EWU or Whitworth or GU, and they actually come back and join our department as volunteers. As a matter of fact, one of the gals I ran into this summer, she just made a detective, major crimes detective in Benton County. And so we have a footprint statewide and a lot of people don't know that. So we go to competitions nationwide and statewide. So people know our agency very well and we've been involved again since 1987 when former Chief Mangan stood up our volunteer services unit. So we've got a good reputation and it continues to this day. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Two things for me. One, on the Explorer. I recently had a conversation with a constituent who had relocated here from California and his perspective from the California version was that essentially his high school student was darn near patrol-ready when he graduated high school. I mean, it was almost academy-level training that he went through in high school, making him near-ready to be out, you know, as a member of the force. I'm curious, is that, have you heard that? I mean, are there other states that really have more robust programs like that where you're darn near patrol-ready by the time you're done?
I'd have to defer to you on that one.
Yes, so for the state of Washington and California similar and Texas, we have two Explorer academies a year. COVID kind of knocked us down for a couple of years because we didn't have our academies. But there's four different levels and I won't go into detail. If you'd like to talk to me offline, I'd be glad to provide you more details. But we have four different levels in our academies, from basic to intermediate to advanced, and then some other levels beyond that. And so theoretically, if somebody starts at 15 or 16 in our academies, by the time they hit 20, 21, they're very well-trained. Probably not academy-level because there's certain things that we don't touch on, you know, week-long academies that we put them through a four-month, five-month academy at the state level. But they are definitely ready to walk into a reserve academy or a basic law enforcement academy, well-prepared with a lot of tactical experience. Many of the classes that they take at our state, at the Explorer Academy mirrors what they will be given at a basic law enforcement academy, including diversity training and a lot of those things that we provide them at Ablea. Because we, many of the instructors we have at our Explorer academies are instructors at Ablea Academy. So we stay up with the times and we are redoing our curriculum at every, you know, every year to make sure that we are providing our students with exactly what they're going to see out in the field. So that's pretty accurate.
Great, okay. Thank you so much for that input. The other thing is, and be looking for a meeting invite soon, to talk more about better utilization of the Northeast Precinct because I've been hearing just a lot of concerns from constituents in Northeast around just the lack of access, the lack of, you know, folks who are occupying the space, whether it's COPS volunteers or actual officers. And then also some concerns related to the impression that's given from the vehicles being parked there that it is fully staffed and when people arrive, there's nobody there to even open the door. And so just trying to figure out better utilization of that space to really, really use it as an actual precinct, I think would be really, really important. And so I want to, and I talked to Jeff Johnson about this at the police advisory meeting and fully in on how we can converse around making this happen, so.
Absolutely. I'd be interested to hear.
And I'll just come, I think that's the same concern they have at the East Central. Lots of cars there, but never truly any accessibility. So perceptions that it's staffed, but community members are confused, so.
Yep. So look for that and look forward to that conversation.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Can we ask them? Okay, dogs, cats, and their names.
I have two dogs. I have a black lab pointer named Luna and a, I have no idea because he was a pound dog, little maybe pit bullish mix named Snickers.
Snickers.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
One dog down from a lot of other dogs. Only one currently. I like having one and she's a shelter dog and her name is Moka, excuse me, Moka.
Moka. One more.
One dog named Louis. He's an Australian shepherd and I didn't really want to get him. Our daughter wanted him and now he's my dog.
That's what happens.
Hey, thank you very much. Next up, Eric Olson, photo enforcement.
Eric, do you have a dog or a cat?
There you go. I now have a dog.
And what's the dog's name?
Zola.
Oh, very nice.
If you look it up, it means either, on Google, it's either a lump of earth or a cheap woman. So the name was picked, the name was picked by my seven-year-old.
Seven-year-old pick's name, all right.
Very nice.
Like that seven-year-old already.
Yep. So I'm here just to talk about the photo enforcement contract. It's being reviewed. It's going through the process. City legal has looked at it. I think we're on the seventh version. We'll have the next version for advanced next Monday is the theory for approval. The contract does expire in November, so we're trying to push this through. I can tell you about some of the pieces of it, like it is a five-year contract and at the end of each five years, it comes back before this body to be renewed for just oversight. We did not send this out for RFP because of the integrity or actually the fact that all the equipment is in the earth and it would have been a huge interruption in services. The vendor did knock the price down considerably and it saved us a couple hundred thousand dollars, I believe. They actually reset the price to where we had it start 15 years ago. So we are kind of resetting that with a margin for increase of costs every year based on, I believe, the CPI. What other kind of questions do we have?
I just had one, which is just around, is there any other providers that are more local or locally-based that we could theoretically RFP in the future? That's really my only.
We can look and what we're looking for, so there isn't anything local, local. This is pretty fairly local considering the global scale. Some of these are based, one was based for a while out of Australia. Now has a US-based company. The one we've used is in Arizona, has been in Arizona for 15 to 20 years, if not longer, probably longer than that. One of the reasons I want to do the five-year, keep coming back as opposed to just let this renew every year unless we say no, is at the end of each five years, I want the sergeant that's in charge of the program to do an evaluation of, okay, what's out there, what's back? I want them to come back to this council and say, here's where we are. Is there new technology? Is there something more efficient, something more effective? So that way, every five years, we'll come back and say, all we have to do is vote yes on this contract to extend and the terms are already set and/or here's the options of what else is out there. So they'll be able to give you an overview of that program.
And I see another question, just to follow up real fast. If we do that, don't we need to do that maybe sooner than five years? Because five years is when the contract's up and we would need to.
Right. I mean, it would have to be before that time, before the five years is up, that we'd come back and do our review and give you a status to the council to see if this is something we want to continue down the road.
And not to add more onto your plate, but five years for like a technology, to me, seems like a very long time. You know, technology is constantly changing. So why five as opposed to like three or something like that?
Five is what we started with. Five years was, we've had three five-year increments with this company. Something else I didn't, I don't know if I noted, in this contract, they are giving us, even on the existing sites, an upgrade to the most current technology. We've also written into this technology at what parameters we want to have that technology updated, whether it be, it's most likely the hardware that gets updated at those timeframes. But it's a good round number, kind of arbitrary in the sense of it's five versus three or seven. It's what we've started with and we're just sticking with it kind of thing. Oh, one more thing. Actually, there is one reason for five overall. When we do a new approach, a new intersection or something like that, so let's say we start, when we started the program, we started with, I believe, four intersections like the Maples and such. When we start that, we agree to have those for five years, that the company that doesn't charge us any upfront cost at all on any of these sites, right? They do all the work, all the equipment is paid for by them. They get a flat monthly fee from us and it takes three of those years to make their money back and then the next couple of years are profit. So that's why when we do new approaches, we want to do five so that's where they start getting that speed spot where they make their money back. That's why the five. And there's actually written into the contract, if we start a new approach, which we are likely to, you know, if we add to this program, that applies to any of the new approaches. So let's say we're a year in and we decided to add either another speed base or another red light enforcement camera somewhere, that program starts over again where we will, if we opt out before that, we'll have to pay them a little difference at the end of that period, which is just fair in the sense of they're getting their piece of the investment they've invested, the money that they've invested.
Anything else? All right. Thank you so much. Next up, Shawna Ernst, and I understand Shawna's got some really exciting news for us, so this is awesome.
Yeah, good afternoon. So we got an award from DOJ for a million-dollar grant. It's, we can use it for staffing. We get $250,000 a year for three years to offset some current staffing, current staff wages. We also get to hire a project employee to help us do this work. So the work is that we are going to streamline digital evidence sharing between police and prosecution. Right now, the process is really manual. So especially with municipal court, when they get a citation, they have to go and fill out a form requesting the body camera video and then we, my team and police record shares it across. So every single case. And that's, it's a lot of work and it's easy to accidentally miss something, right? So we don't want to ever have any kind of discovery issues, so we're trying to mitigate that. So the goal of this is to automate the whole thing. So when they get that citation, that number is mapped over to our system and the body camera video and digital evidence is automatically shared so that we're not relying on people and we save everybody some time. So that's the goal of this. It was a really competitive grant. Under our category, they only award two agencies in the entire country and we got one of them and we got the full amount that we could possibly be funded. So 250K a year for three years for staffing and then 250K for professional services from our vendors to help us get this done and make the process a lot better.
That's great. Shawna, do you, so understanding the focus with working with the prosecutors, I'm imagining that that's going to create a lot of efficiencies since it's no longer going to have to be a manual process. So that's great and that's really important, I think, with how we invest these things. But my other question would be, is there any capacity or do you imagine there might be some capacity that we could utilize from this grant to maybe help work with the county a bit on the intel side of things? Because I feel like there's some crossover here that could work in what they're doing with their intelligence center. And is there any opportunity for us to maybe use some of this to work with them on that?
I think there's some potential there. So the grant does cover, we're going to start with city prosecution, but we're going to expand to county prosecution. And since we work in a consortium with all of our other local law enforcement agencies for Axon System, I think there's some, there's some room there to streamline some other digital evidence sharing as well.
Okay, oh, that would be great.
Cool.
Anything else for Shawna?
Shawna, you're a rock star.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your good work. And do you have a pet, a cat, or a dog?
I do. I live in your district, so you and councilmembers upon have probably heard them. They're beagles. I have two of them. Pilot and Scout are the beagles and then I have a cat named Felix.
Okay.
Very nice.
Yeah.
I just, I heard that we are one of two cities in the United States that receive this, right?
That's correct, under our category. So there was a category that lets other departments start a body camera program. And so there were lots of awards under that category, but under our specific category, we're one of two.
Wow. Fantastic.
Good job.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Last but not least, we've got Tim Schwering talking about cryptocurrency.
And we want to hear about your pets.
We got it. We've already preempted this.
Wow.
We got you. So this is Charlie.
Oh, Charlie.
He was, this is from this weekend. He was freshly bathed. He was not happy with me. He's an Australian Labradoodle, about a little over two years old, and nothing quite says that you've firmly entrenched yourself in middle age like owning a Labradoodle. But enough about Charlie.
Very good.
Very nice.
So today, we're here to talk about pig butchering and cryptocurrency. And we'll start off by saying this is going to be an interactive session a little bit. So how many here have heard of pig butchering?
I'm assuming it's different than what I'm thinking about.
Probably, would be my guess. Anyone? Anyone? Okay. So how many have seen or received a, let's see, we went back. There we go. Have you ever gotten a wrong-number text from somebody saying, hey, Jonathan, sorry, I missed you the other day, you know, let's catch up soon? And it's completely wrong number. Something like that. That is the start of pig butchering. So what happens in those instances is that you have a bunch of people that are attempting to make contact with people around the country and it's called pig butchering. And we didn't come up with the name, they came up with the name. A lot of this stems from over in China. And so what happens is there are people over in China that are, some of them are scraping the internet, finding personal information about you. And then you've got others that are just in charge of texting people, emailing people, things like that. Most of the time, what we're seeing here recently is it's involving cryptocurrency as opposed to regular US dollars or things like that, just because it's easier to move from country to country. What will usually happen, again, is that there's that text message, the direct messages on social media, LinkedIn for goodness sakes, I didn't realize anyone still used that, but people are getting scammed through LinkedIn. And so what happens is you have these people that are reaching out, making contact under false pretenses and developing a relationship. Once this person responds, so sorry, wrong number, you must have the wrong person, and then they'll say, oops, I'm sorry, or whatever it is they're going to say. And then sometimes a kind of conversation happens. And from there, basically a virtual relationship builds. Obviously, a lot had to do with COVID. We had a lot of people trapped inside their homes, very lonely, and basically just needed really any human contact. So again, this goes through instant messaging services, social media, dating sites. We'll see that a lot as well. Something to kind of keep in mind as far as things that maybe you guys might not run Something to kind of keep in mind as far as things that maybe you guys might not run into, but you might, people that either your constituents, friends, family, anyone telling you that they're, they've got somebody that they met online, or they're requesting money, call to action, like clicking on a link. We always get the know-before things from Shawna, telling us not to click on certain links. Same goes in your personal life. A sense of urgency, a lot of times it'll be a case of where the person they met online is now overseas, and they are trapped in the country, and they need 10,000 Bitcoin in order to get out of the country safely. Other times, it's going to be an investment sales pitch. So what they will do is say, hey, have you heard of Bitcoin? You can make a lot of money on Bitcoin. And what happens is that they'll talk the person into investing, let's say, a thousand dollars into Bitcoin, into this account, and it's a sham account. And they will, as that's going, they will even allow them to take money out. And so they might withdraw $500, so that they feel more confident and comfortable in that it's a legitimate investment. And so then they'll invariably put more money in, and then they'll get, you know, bigger returns as they're seeing on their statements or in their account. Obviously, the account is completely fraudulent. I keep hitting the wrong button. And then there's the point of, like, where we all have that when we've made probably a bad decision of, like, the uh-oh. And by the time they reach the uh-oh point, it's already too late. The money's already been invested in the crypto. The crypto's now overseas, most likely, and there's really not a good way to get it back. I provided some examples of kind of what you might see. If any time that anything can be used in reference to Seinfeld, I usually try to include that in my presentations. This is no different, where we have the latt, balat, which is probably a good indication that it's probably not a real person. Also, I always like to point out to people my own age that a person that looks like that isn't going to be reaching out to me, who is safely aged out of any appeal that I might have had. They're not, they don't want to talk to me. So it's these types of interactions where obviously the scammer has no idea that they're referencing, making Seinfeld references, and doesn't even know what Kramer or Jerry look like. So that kind of tells you what they're doing. Another example, they will have you install applications on your phone. Telegram's another one. That one's based out of Russia. There's no way to trace anything. You can't execute a search warrant on Telegram to get any of the information out of there. And this basically gives you just a general view of what I'm seeing when you work on these cases. So that first one, far over on the left-hand side, that's the Bitcoin ATM machine right here in Spokane, Washington. And that is the same Bitcoin ATM machine that one of my victims placed money into. Once the money is placed into, it immediately goes to the bad guy's wallet, and once it's in that wallet, it then starts spreading. And so they keep moving money and splitting it up to make it more difficult to trace. Once you finally get over at the end, you'll find an exchange, an exchange in cryptocurrency terms is simply, you think of it like a bank. And that usually is, I've gotten actually really good at tracing money to Russia, China, and North Korea, all of which have politely told me to go do something I can't do to myself when I would ask them for that money back. So it's just gone. So you just can't do anything about it. And that's why we're trying to do a public safety campaign on just stopping putting money in Bitcoin machines.
So can you just close the Bitcoin machine down, just like...
Excellent question. So in getting into this, and I would, I don't want to purport to be an expert by any stretch of imagination, I've taken a few classes, I've gone to the Secret Service School on cryptocurrency. It still seems, in some respects, a bit of a mystery to me. And part of the issue is you've got different levels of regulation. You've got the city regulation, and there's not a lot. You can put up warning signs. We're already working with the city, Mary Marazzo, on figuring out ordinances that we can start implementing locally. Then there's the state, and the state has different, they have different agencies, and it's sort of a, kind of a mystery to me sometimes on who's in charge of what in the state, because Bitcoin ATMs are referred to as remitters. And so that is, so it's over fintech, I believe is the state agency that handles that. And so there's some question on whether they're doing enough enforcement, or if they're doing the correct enforcement. And so we're actually working, along with Mary, working with the state agencies on kind of figuring out a good process to get these registered, because you've got about 26 here in Spokane that are just in, like, Divines, Piggy Mart, all over the place.
I guess I'm wondering if you, you're talking about the interactions on the chats, and a lot of times it's a digital link that they're contributing. So what percentage are folks going to a machine and transacting versus doing this just all on their phone or on their computer?
It honestly depends. I mean, it is a, what will happen, a lot of time with the Bitcoin ATM machines, you're dealing with people that have little-to-know technology experience. And so what they're doing is they're saying, go to, you know, Piggy Mart here in Spokane, and there is a Bitcoin ATM machine in there, and they give them the specific instructions on what to do. They'll give them a QR code. You know, you can click the QR code, and that will get you right to the wallet where that money needs to go. Other times, it might be where you're installing apps on the, on your phone, and just simply you're getting scammed in the comfort of your own home.
Is there, so the machine aside, is there anything else at the local level that we, other than just a PR campaign, but that we can actually do that Mary's come up with so far, or is that still in the...
It's still, we're still in process. And really nowhere in the country that I've been able to find is anyone really has a good grasp on this yet. I know New York has initiated statewide legislation trying to deal with this, but there's not a great answer right now, because it's, again, it's very new technology, and it's sort of, you know, it's kind of a mystery to a lot of people. And so when I talk about Bitcoin, and I would have been in the same boat even six months ago, and so it's just so new, and there's so many people that don't really have any basis of knowledge, it's kind of making us kind of slow on the uptick.
Okay. Go ahead.
Jenny Ramos suggested signage. Would that be an option? Signage for the machines?
So we, I've already reached out to my HSI partner, and he's gotten me a rough sketch of a, basically a warning sign that could go on or around a Bitcoin ATM machine. And in essence, the idea would be is that if you have, you know, even the inkling that you might be getting scammed, call this number, and it'll be Crime Check. And I'm still in the process of working with Crime Check, so they can reach out to me directly, so it kind of cuts down on the time between the call coming in and when I find out about it. So that way, it can be a, hopefully, a quicker process where I can call somebody and say, just don't put your money in anything until we can sit down and talk about it, and I can verify things for you.
It might be better to use a different number if, to make that happen.
Yeah.
That's a different discussion. That's way above my pay grade, so I'm not going to go there. But so how it works right now is I'm just doing that with Crime Check. If there's another option down the road, we'll address that. The other aspect that we're trying to do as well is, you know, reaching out to different groups within the city that were, that normally, you know, me not thinking about it would miss, right? Because there's different groups that speak maybe only Farsi, or only, you know, there's just different groups that we don't normally interact with. And so I've reached out, I know with the council's, I'm not sure of his title, but the diversity person. And so I've, and then we're meeting, the three of us are going to be meeting here, I think, in two weeks with the main diversity person for the city, trying to get a game plan going, so we can reach kind of these communities that maybe we normally don't reach, that are also getting scammed. Because the key, kind of the key thing, too, and not to go...
So on that note, real quick, you know, any sort of QR code or anything that you could add to those warning labels that would translate it into other languages? And obviously, we're doing that work, trying to do that work right now with the city, you know, pilot that. So anything we can do to be of assistance on that, too?
Yep. And that's kind of why I'm bringing them in, because I, this is something I'm not well-versed in, and so kind of speaking with the experts on that, so that way we can include everybody.